Let's call this special meeting of the Aurora City Council for December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Madam Clerk, you please call a roll.
Alderman Yamas? Alderman Yamas?
Come back to Alderman Yamas.
Alderman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Masiacos?
Present.
Alderman Donal?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Tolliver?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bog?
Here.
Alderwoman Bade?
Not here.
Alderman Lash?
Present.
Alderman Warman?
Here.
Mayor Ervins present.
Alderman Yamas.
And Alderman Yamas?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes. Here.
Here.
Alderman Yamas and Alderman Bog request permission to participate remotely per Section two dash eight zero based on a reasonable anticipation-
Samot.
-of extended illness. There's been a motion made by Alderman, uh, Alderman Garza, seconded by, um, Patty Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion approved if I'm at charge and armed?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries and we have our sergeant-at-arms here in the room. All right, let's, uh, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is over to our left. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag-
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Bog, will you give the invitation, please?
Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to serve and protect the people of the city of Aurora. We ask for special wisdom today as we meet the needs of those around us. We thank you for our first responders, our fire, police, and of course, our veterans and those who have served our country so well. We pay all this in the name of your son. Amen.
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 All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will you read the rules of public comment, please?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Before we call the first speaker, Madam Clerk, let me remind everyone that you have that every person that speaks has up to three minutes. However, we have a number of speakers that are here that have signed up to speak, so if you don't need to speak your whole three minutes, give everyone an opportunity to, uh, to have, uh, some say. Our public comment only goes for the first thirty minutes of, of our meeting, so hopefully everybody will be able to get in and, uh, and, uh, and speak that has signed up. Madam Clerk, will you call the first-
Mr. Mayor, quick question.
Alderman, uh, I don't want to flash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, would it be possible to suspend the rules to allow every person that has signed up to speak if we were to entertain a motion?
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change the rules now. Um, we, we're gonna go ahead and start this meeting and go with what the rules that we normally go by, and, uh, hopefully those folks won't take their whole three minutes and we give everybody an opportunity to speak, and they're not repetitive. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, call the first-
Shannon Cameron?
Ms. Cameron, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you. I was made aware that city officials were taken by surprise when buses of legal entry asylees arrived in our area on Tuesday night. There was no prior notice or time to prepare, and you were forced to react in the moment, making decisions that you believed to be in the best interest of those on the buses. I want to extend my heartfelt plea for the future. The next time such a situation arises, I urge you to lean on the strength of our community. As soon as word reached us that we might, there might be more buses coming, those of us who work tirelessly with this population daily sprung into action. We mobilized to gather food, cold and flu medicine, clothing and coats for both children and adults, and resources for asylum seekers along with interpreters. We stand ready and willing to assist in any way we can during times of crisis, and we are committed to supporting our city and those who seek refuge within it. I ask you to understand the impact of this ordinance change and consider what it might look like to welcome newcomers to our city with intentionality and care. These families have spent days fleeing violence on foot in their home countries to seek refuge in our country. Then they were herded like cattle into a bus traveling twenty-plus hours only to be trained away to Chicago. Who do we want to be to them in this process? I hope we can be a welcoming, uh, city that clothes their children to protect them from the cold, that gives them medicine to ease their illnesses after such a treacherous journey, fills their bellies to give them the energy they need to endure the difficulty of their uncertain future, and gives them resources so they can feel capable of navigating systems. I hope when they look back at this time of trauma in their lives, Aurora is a reprieve in the chaos, and our city is remembered for its compassion and the beauty of its people. I would like to bring up an opportunity that was missed in the recent past. This fall, I reached out to the city urging you to apply for the forty-two million dollars in funding Governor Pritzker made available to municipalities to help them prepare for the influx of asylees into the cities. Regrettably, both city officials and the King County Board did not pursue the funding for Aurora. I understand that there may be concerns about accepting this money, fearing that it might be seen as an invitation for more people to come here. However, the truth is that asylees are already here and are, continue to come every single day. They may not come all at once on buses, but they end up here in one way or another. They have been here for years, and we see hundreds of them each month in our area pantries and welcoming centers, and ordinance will not stop people from coming here. I know, um, many of you love the diversity of Aurora as I do. Please understand that we, the members of this community, want to collaborate with you and stand by your side during these moments. I have cards available with my cellphone number on them, and I implore you not to hesitate to call me at any time of day or night. I am committed to do everything in my power to ensure that the people here are clothed, fed, and welcomed with compassion. You do not have to shoulder this burden alone. I hope you will partner with us in the same energy-
Thank you. Um, next caller, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Katrina Lonchinsky? Uh, Katrina Lonchinsky?
Ms. Lonchinsky, is there Katrina Lonchinsky? 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 Is that person here? All right, call the next speaker.
David Cannon?
Mr. Cannon, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good afternoon, I'm David Cannon, resident of the Fifth Ward. This special meeting was convened in response to an event fully outside of our control. Buses full of asylum seekers, all here legally, I remind you, arrived in Aurora on Tuesday to take the train into the city of Chicago to avoid being impounded. I am interested in discussing our initial response and how we should proceed moving forward. From what I've gathered, buses arrived late Tuesday, drivers disembarked to purchase train tickets from Aurora to Chicago. I understand two pressing issues arose. One bus did not have enough funds to cover the cost of tickets, to solve this city staff purchased tickets for a busload of passengers, aiding and subsidizing someone else's people relocation program. Were city funds used for this, and do we want to participate in such a program? A later bus would not arrive early enough to catch the last train around eleven, meaning that people would have nowhere to go until the first train in the morning, as the Aurora Transportation Center closes at ten, unless available is a warming center. I don't know how the second problem was resolved. I don't have all the facts yet. That said, I would request full transparency from the city as to exactly what did happen on Tuesday, who made what decisions, and why. It's important to reflect after an important event to determine the facts and use hindsight to prepare for the future. We deserve this transparency and accountability from our government. Furthermore, I think it's important to humanize and respect the wishes of the people on these buses. The most important question I have from Tuesday is, are the people on the bus of their own volition? Do they wish to get on a train to Chicago? We cannot and should not compel someone to get on a train if they do not want to. Um, furthermore, if we could rewind and have advance notice, how would we redo Tuesday? I think we would have city staff and volunteers at the ATC with food, water, blankets, clothing, extra phone chargers, a list of resources in Spanish. I also think we would have asked if they were being transported against their will or not. Some may not want to go to Chicago, some may have other destinations in mind or simply need a place to stay for the night. We would have been ready to offer shelter to those who needed it. This is a job for the Aurora Emergency Management Association and the Kane County Emergency Management. How were they involved on Tuesday? The city needs a plan for engaging asylum seeker, seekers. Who in the city is responsible for the well-being of this vulnerable population? Moreover, to take a step back, the city of Aurora has no safety net. We rely on our various nonprofits to meet many people's basic needs. The city needs to be more involved to coordinate and provide staff and tax dollars to make sure we take care of anyone who needs shelter, food, clothing, healthcare, transportation, et cetera. What is government for if not to meet people's basic needs? And, as for the ordinance before you today, it seems unnecessary and may have unintended consequences for local small businesses. Council, you make our laws, and I expect you to do your due diligence before putting them on the books. If you, like me, don't fully understand what you're approving, even though I've read it a couple of times now, I encourage you to send this to committee and have it go through the normal deliberative process that your decisions deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Marjorie Loggman?
Ms. Loggman, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
I would like to speak to the heart of the issue on the migrant situations specific to Aurora and no other city. As I said last time, this administration is so involved in making Aurora famous that the migrants certainly would be a disruption to the plan. Money might have to be taken from the casino and the lights program to help people at the cost of being famous. Unfortunately, I've been privy to conversations about getting the riffraff out of town and Alderman talking how things would improve if we moved the poor people out. This, I am sure, would include migrants in need. The money is there, the city-owned space is there, but the political will is not. I see the photo ops with the various ones of you using your time in the projects to prove your fame. I talked to those folks in the project, the hood, and Little Mexico, and they don't want you coming around anymore as they feel betrayed and used. The photo op of passing out turkeys reminded me of Chicago back in the day. One turkey, one vote. I am not saying it's all of you on the council, but this rising Aurora to a famed position by self-engrandissement and using funds to promote self and others' enrichment is more a stain on the city than its past era of gang violence. Knowing what I know about some of the down-under happenings here, I see instead of not being able to care for the people, your intentionality leans towards how it would affect your agenda of having what you consider high-end people here and splashy events where cost is no object. Intentionality is everything. I fear an ordinance like this specific to Aurora would open the door to further marginalization of those you consider riffraff. If I had the time, I would play for you, this, excuse me, the song by Peter, Paul, and Mary, "There but for fortune, go you and go I."
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Nathan Shepherd?
Mr. Shepherd, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good afternoon, Congresspeople, uh, councilpeople. My name is Nathan, and I'm a community organizer here in the city of Aurora. I've been doing this for a while now, and I think it is quite a shame that we are trying to pass an ordinance that's trying to restrict the amount of buses that come into our city and inherently restricts the amount of migrants that we can take into the city. Now, don't get me wrong, I understand we do have limited resources, as Shannon brought up earlier with the forty-two million dollar grant now being accepted, but I also want to make this clear. This is, problem is only going to get worse from here on out with the rise of profits that are leading to the global climate changes that we are currently experiencing. I mean, it was fifty degrees outside a couple days ago. So I think it's a great shame they're trying to pass this ordinance. So with those limited resources, I want to point out a few things that kind of makes that statement, which is probably true, a little more insufficient. So, as we know, people around here are here. We are talking about this issue that's currently going on here, right? So people deeply care about this issue. And then I know for the work I've done with the Aurora Prosperity Democracy Hub, people really want to support our community. People really want to build a strong community, support one another, trust one another. They want to believe in one Aurora. So with that in mind, it is a shame, and I've read this in the Daily Herald, that no organizations were reached out to to support when these migrants came in a few days ago. And I think that really limits the amount of resources that we have in this city, because there's plenty of resources, if you talk to any organizations around here, that want to support the issues that are going on. They wanted to greet. There are people I know for a fact that wanted to go there, give food, give water, and give winter clothes, because, I mean, it's thirty degrees outside now, too. So with that in mind, I have two calls of action for the city council and also for general people here. One is, do you really have limited resources, or are you starving yourselves? Because I think there's plenty of opportunities, not just inside the city council itself, but also in the local community, that want to support. And I think it is a shame and a struggle that the city is not willing to try to talk to its own citizens about how we can support. And then also, on the citizens of Aurora, if you're not involved in local organizations, please get involved. We need as many people as possible, especially with the rise of these crises that are happening right now. There are many wonderful places that you can go to, and you can talk to me later if you'd like to find out more about those organizations. But, like I said, joint organization and the first city council, please don't limit your resources because you don't want to talk to people. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Zach Fry?
Mr. Fry, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of Aurora City Council. My name is Zach, and I'm speaking today as a concerned citizen and also on behalf of my friend Eddie, who's also a concerned citizen, who could also not be here today, like many individuals, due to this meeting being inappropriately held in the middle of the workday. I am here today to express our great concern regarding this proposed amendment and my immense disappointment with the actions of both the mayor's office and city council. Some background for those in the audience and even those members on city council who may not know, um, what caused this amendment to be introduced. Late in the night of Tuesday, December nineteenth, when temperatures were below freezing, four buses carrying migrants arrived from Chicago to the Aurora Transportation Center. The Aurora Police Department arrived on scene and contacted the mayor's office seeking direction on what to do. The mayor's office subsequently instructed APD to put the migrants on a train back to the city of Chicago. In light of this event, the mayor and city council quickly turned around and are now seeking to pass the proposed amendment, which would, quote, "define and prohibit unscheduled bus stops," end quote, "per the notice of a special city of Aurora council meeting released Wednesday, December twentieth." Many other community members, activists, and organizers, including myself, believe that this language is simply code for prohibiting all future migrant buses in the city of Aurora. I ask the voting member, uh, members of city council to recognize the humanity of these migrants, many of which are fleeing decaying economic and political situations throughout Latin America, that the United States has had a direct role in causing, most notably the internationally condemned sanctions the United States has placed on Venezuela since two thousand and seventeen. It is a shame that I even have to stand here today begging like a starving dog for you fine individuals to see these migrants as something more than a bad policy decision, a financial risk, and a threat. Aurora's immigrant community has long made the city the vibrant cultural place that it currently is, yet the city council has continually passed legislation that actively harms these communities. Earlier this year, an amendment was passed to the peddlers and solicitors section of the Aurora Municipal Code, in which tent vendors were effectively banned, and the mayor's response to his concerns that were raised was for vendors to simply acquire a brick-and-mortar store, demonstrating the mayor's dissonance from the crushing economic reality of the average Auroraan. Combined with the historical legislative moves to significantly prohibit food trucks and community murals in the city of Aurora, many of which were run and painted by the Latino community, these actions show that there has been a trend of anti-immigration policy that has been adopted by the city of Aurora, and this amendment, should it pass, would only serve to advance this trend. This trend also goes against the city of Aurora's alleged commitments to values such as equity, diversity, and inclusivity that many government officials like to sum up in the deceptively catchy slogan, "One Aurora." Once again, Eddie and I both condemn this amendment and do not wish to see it be passed. We encourage all of you to vote today against today's resolution. The city council has had no problem assisting wealthy contractors through ludicrous housing projects in the extremely harmful situation revolving around the casino move. Why are you unable, or rather unwilling, to extend that same empathy to working-class people? I have a good idea as to why, and so does everyone else in this room, in your wards and in your city. And I yield my, the rest of my time.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Sandra Gonzalez?
Ms. Gonzalez, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thirty years ago, two Central American asylum seekers migrated to the U.S., escaping Salvadoran civil war, a war perpetuated by U.S. government intervention. I stand here as their oldest daughter of Salvadoran asylum seekers, one of five hundred thousand in living in the U.S., myself, a member of the Aurora community, an educator, organizer, doctoral candidate, and director of the Aurora Rapid Response Team. Central American, Venezuelan, and Colombian asylum seekers have been arriving for more than the past five years, in more prominence in the last two as busing grew out of unfriendly states. We are here to work with community, with the city, to provide humanitarian response to who I see as my family and those seeking asylum. A legal right, should this ordinance come to fruition, will my family of asylum seekers be insured safety if they were to arrive on a bus that did not follow this ordinance? Would they be detained? Or would I hope they be treated with the same community kindness that my parents received thirty years ago coming from Central America? This ordinance does not answer these questions, and the city will have to answer to asylees' families for the humanitarian negligence.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Frances Cedro?
Call the name again.
Frances Cedro, C-E-D-R-O.
All right, call the next speaker. I'm sorry, hold on. Cedro, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hello, I am here as a longtime resident of Aurora in opposition to this ordinance. Um, it was very discouraging to learn that people were turned away during Christmas. Is this not the season that we celebrate a family that's been, that we're, the world's probably the most famous asylum seekers? Um, our history is one in which we have provided refuge for runaway slaves. Um, it's been built on the backs of immigrants from Europe, from Mexico, recently Asia, and we've also been, we've also been provided home for those who have been refugees. Um, it's been a point of pride for me to point out to my city, to point out to people talking about my city that, you know, about, it's been about, just, we're betraying that legacy, we're betraying that heritage. And so I also ask my community to not be frightened, to not be swayed by this scarcity mentality that makes us think that if we provide help and shelter and refuge for others, that there will be not, there'll be nothing left for us. The last four, couple of years has shown all of us, right, that the money is there, the resources are there, and we as Auroraans have always turned, have always supported each other and collectively come together to support each other. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Aron Boxenbaum?
Mr. Boxenbaum, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Uh, my name is Aron Boxenbaum. I'm a candidate for state representative in the eighty-third district that includes parts of the south and west side here in Aurora. I'm the son of an immigrant and the grandson and great-grandson of refugees. Many of my family members were relocated to this country following the Holocaust, and while their resettlement was far from perfect, the government still recognized their humanity and basic rights. Uh, when I see immigrants arriving at our border and seeking asylum, I see the struggles my family endured, and I know it's my turn to welcome people in, as was done with my family. Just as we were called upon to, to welcome immigrants into our communities after the Holocaust and many other moments in our history, we're again asked to welcome those in need. Immigrants make our community so much more vibrant, this should not have to be explained to the city of Aurora, which is home to many different immigrant communities. Fringe voices in our political environment are using migrants in need as pawns to try to test how committed Illinoisans are to inclusion, and we should not falter. Rather, we should stand strong in our belief that all are welcome here. These migrants are being denied food and water, medical care, and adequate shelter when they're being sent from the border and into our communities. To turn them away and deny them essential human needs goes against everything we should stand for. When migrant buses arrive in Aurora, there must be essential resources available, uh, to, to provide care. Just because fringe politicians don't view these migrants as human does not mean that we should too. Migrants are human beings, they must be treated with dignity and respect. We should never stoop down to the level of people like Ron DeSantis and Greg Abbott, who are sending these people our way. We should never abandon our shared humanity, and we should never turn away those in need. I strongly urge the city council to reject this ordinance and make our values of inclusion clear.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Denise Kehoe?
Ma'am, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good afternoon, my name is Denise Kehoe Meneses. I am a thirty-six-year, um, Aurora resident, and I have worked for East Aurora School District one thirty-one for thirty-some years. I am now on permanent vacation. My husband, my husband Luis Meneses is very well-known here in Aurora. He's not with us anymore. He's Venezuelan. He died. Um, I was an immigrant to Venezuela in nineteen eighty, and I was welcomed with such love. The Venezuelan people are the most wonderful, beautiful people. My mother-in-law, my father-in-law, my sisters-in-laws, my family is still there. They are suffering. We came back here in nineteen eighty-seven and came to Aurora with no job and no home, but we came into this city and we, as this nation, we're, we're a nation of immigrants, and I'm so proud of Aurora. I'm not from Naperville, I'm not from St. Charles, I'm not from Tinley Park. I'm so proud to be here in Aurora, E.A. And, you know, I think we can do better. I'd like, I'd like you guys to have a plan. Um, I don't, thank you very much for all your speakers, I'm really proud of you guys, you did a fabulous job. I don't want to go over and repeat. I'd like you to say, I'd like you to find some better way to do things. You know, um, my husband was a so-hard worker, and he went on to be the bilingual teacher of the year for the state of Illinois. They work so hard. I'd like you to see and welcome people here. I don't know how we can do it. There is a way. Death and taxes, we can't change, but we can change other things. I'd like to see a little bit of change. God bless you all.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Yolanda Peña?
Ms. Peña, Yolanda Peña? Is there someone out in the hall? Nope. Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Javier Reyes?
Javier Reyes? I'm sorry, is that Yolanda Peña?
No.
All right, all right, so hold on a second, hold on a second. Javier Reyes?
Yeah, just a minute, let me just, I need permission to speak.
No, 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 ma'am, ma'am, hold on a second, no, no, no.
I just wanted to say to you Javier is homesick with a hundred and two temperature.
That's okay, that's okay, that's okay, we'll, we'll, we've got a process, we'll go just, we'll call you in a second. If you're, if you've signed up to speak. Javier Reyes?
Here's what I wanted to say.
No, 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 ma'am, you can't, you can't. Please have a seat.
I wanted to speak for him.
Please have a seat.
He asked me to come speak for him.
You can't speak for, for anyone. You speak for yourself. Please have a seat, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please have a seat. Javier Reyes not present, call the next speaker.
Maria Garza?
Is there Maria Garza? Call the next speaker, ma'am.
Steve Hendry?
Steve Hendry? Sir, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good afternoon, Steve Hendry, Ward Two. Um, I've been coming to the city council meetings for at least five years, and I've never seen a meeting run like this. This ordinance has not taken its path. It didn't go to committee, it didn't go to COW, you brought it right here to jam it through. Somebody asked for all of the people, all these people that showed up to talk, and you say thirty minutes, that's all we're going to allow all you people to talk. That has never come up in all the time that I've attended city council meetings, and I think it's pathetic, it's a sham. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves. And I wish that you would take this, this ordinance back to committee, whichever one it goes to, bring it through the regular process, amend the rules, which you won't do, I know you won't do, because that's who you are, and get things done the right way. You, you, at, at Finance Committee, you brag about all the, all the, uh, bonds, about all the grants and everything, all that money that you get to do other things in the city. But when it comes to this type of thing, where it could help these people, where were they? You didn't miss out on all the money that could be gotten for the casino, or many other things. things, I get hung up on the casino. But these people that came, and I saw, they went to Elburn, and they all had, they all had money to go, but here they were short, so it was okay for them to go. In Oak Park, they're doing something different. In Oak Park, they took COVID money and put it aside to take care of the people that maybe were stranded there and needed help. They have churches that are helping out. You think the churches in Aurora wouldn't dive into helping these people? What's the matter with you? What, what's the matter with you? You all signed a civility thing, a civility thing, I will be civil. This is not civil, what you're trying to do. Maybe the bill is one part of it, but you better come up where you ought to come up, I shouldn't say you better, because you're not under my thumb, you're under my vote, though, that you should come up with something stronger to how you're going to help these people, not to how you're going to keep them out of Aurora. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Kasim Rashid.
Is there a Kasim Rashid, order? Is there a Kasim Rashid? Can you check out in the overflow and see if there's a Kasim Rashid? Sir, you have two minutes to speak beginning now.
My name is Kasim Rashid, thank you council for allowing me to speak. My story is that of an immigrant to this country, my family immigrated here almost forty years ago. And when I immigrated, we grew up in DuVig County in sectioned housing, and we fell in hard times. And even as immigrants, it was the social network programs and the social welfare programs that helped us get out of poverty, government programs, because people with compassion and open hearts decided our country's stronger when we have immigrants. Today, as a human rights lawyer, I represent the same asylum seekers and refugees, so I want to talk very quickly about the impact immigrants have in this country. As someone who has represented asylum seekers from Honduras, Afghanistan, Pakistan, and Syria, I can assure you families don't travel thousands of miles on foot for the fun of it. Asylum is protected under U.S. law and international human rights law. Indeed, the Supreme Court has repeatedly ruled that with the exception of voting, running for office, and certain federal positions, undocumented immigrants have the exact same rights as a U.S. citizen in this country. On the economic side, undocumented immigrants pay twelve billion a year in taxes, for which they get zero benefit from. Even studies done by conservative think tanks like the Cato Institute demonstrate that when undocumented immigrants are in a community, wages go up. If we want to increase economic prosperity for all citizens, then we should welcome asylum seekers with open arms. On community, again, the same Cato Institute study, which is a conservative think tank, admits that with undocumented and documented immigrants, crime rates are lower in communities. In fact, they're lower than the crime rates of U.S. citizens. And let's not forget the better food that immigrants bring to the table as well. We know as a matter of fact that immigrants make our communities stronger, safer, healthier. And we also know that they should prevent us from repeating the mistakes of history. Who can forget the SS St. Louis in nineteen thirty-nine, carrying nine hundred and fifty-four refugees, most of them Jewish, trying to escape Nazi Germany? They could see the city lights of Miami, and President FDR said, "Go back." Forced to return to Europe, two hundred and fifty-four of them at least were killed in the Holocaust. Our history owns that, that is our past, but it does not have to be our future. We do not suffer from scarcity, we do not suffer from a lack of resources, we suffer from being who we are as Americans, and it's time for us to stand up and embrace what this country is supposed to be. I close with the words of human rights lawyer and immigration rights lawyer Krish Omara Vignaraja, who said, "We welcome refugees not because they are American, but because we are American." Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Mitchell Holland.
Is there Mitchell Holland? Mitchell Holland, can you check and see in the overflow room if there's a Mitchell Call the next speaker.
Deb Fischer.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Speaker beginning now.
My name is Deb Fischer, my husband and I moved to Aurora seven years ago in retirement because our daughter and her family live here. Because I'm a retired pastor, two of the first things I did was begin to volunteer at Hesit House and begin to volunteer at Aurora Interfaith Food Pantry. I found both experiences telling me a lot about Aurora. Aurora is kind to people who are temporarily in need of help. Aurora treats people who are temporarily in need of help with dignity and respect. It made me glad I had moved here. Also, in the first year I was here, without exception, every single person I met said, "You know, Aurora is the second-largest city in Illinois." So my question today is, how is it that the second-largest city in Illinois, that treats people temporarily in need of help with dignity and respect, was not prepared Tuesday night? How is it that when we were told about a grant, no action was taken, so that we could be prepared when people came to us who were temporarily in need? Now, I don't fault you for being angry with the southern cities who have done this to us, I am angry too. I don't blame you for being furious that Aurora was given no notification this was going to happen. I am furious too. However, this is not about northern, southern city conflict. This is not about politics. This is about people who are in need temporarily of our help. My mother always used to tell me, "Debbie, two wrongs don't make a right." And that's what I'm here to say today. Not happy with the southern cities who've sent people to us, but two wrongs do not make a right. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Thu Elliott.
Mr. Elliott, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good morning, my name is Thu Elliott, I'm a resident of Ward Four. When another member of my household called our alderman to express dismay at this ordinance and its process, and the recent treatment of arrivals to our city, the response was that we sent them to Chicago because Chicago has received funds. That response makes sense if, faced with cold and hungry and displaced people, you look at your wallet, and then you say no, and you do not raise your eyes to look around you and see what's available. If you refuse to ask the question, "What can we do?", and instead simply answer, "The decisions have been made," that is a failure. Your vision and your focus has consistently proven to be perverse in this body. Your focus is on profits and properties, and as much as you love to bellow "One Aurora" at ribbon cuttings and public events and photo opportunities, what you mean is one vision for Aurora, and it is not yours. We, we are One Aurora. Shape up.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Eli Bratman.
Mr. Bratman, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Eli Bratman, and I'm a resident of the city of Chicago, so I bring a bit of a different perspective, but I just want to say, having lived in the city, living across the street from a migrant shelter that I can see outside my window, we have a lot of people we're welcoming into our community, northern Illinois more generally, and we need to welcome them with open arms. Chicago has a lot of burdens placed on them right now. We can't just have everyone in one city, it's not realistic, it's not conducive. It's important that Aurora serve as a welcoming spot. We have such a beautifully diverse community here in Aurora, with grocery stores and affordable housing, all within walking distance of one another, yet what's on the table today would make it so that people are bused to other places, like Elburn, where they were just sent and have nowhere to go if they don't have train tickets to Chicago, if they even make it on the train to Chicago, and are not exposed to the extremely cold weather and other conditions from that travel after a treacherous twenty-hour bus ride from Texas to Illinois. I urge this body to consider all of the many comments by community members and advocates today, and to table it and have it go through a more formal process. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public speaking.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to extend public comment.
Hold on a second, hold on one second, hold on one second, I'll be right. That concludes our public speaking section of the agenda. Apparently, there's a motion on the table, what motion would you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to extend the public comment period to a time that's necessary to allow all those who have signed up to speak to speak.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second by Alderman Bug, so we're going to take a call the roll, a yes vote would mean that we extend it a period of time, a no vote would mean that we continue on with the rest of the city council meeting. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
No.
Alderwoman Garza?
No.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
No.
Alderman Franco?
No.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
No.
Alderwoman Smith?
No.
Hold on a second, there's someone that keeps yelling out as the, as the clerk is calling the roll, you must stop that and keep order, if not, you'll be removed from the council chambers. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
No.
Four yes, seven no.
All right, motion is defeated, we will continue. Please remove that person from the city council chambers, who?
This is not a representational government.
Let's move on to the next portion of the agenda. Is there a motion to suspend the rules, to consider items under new business?
You guys are all chickens that voted no. I'm leaving. How dare you vote no? All these people came to speak there.
Please remove that, please remove this from the city council chambers.
I'm leaving.
Well, thank you, you can move, leave now, leave now and stop talk.
You want to remove us all, you don't care about us.
All right, is there a motion, remove, remove that, remove that person from the city council chambers, Madam Clerk, is there, I'm sorry, is there a motion to suspend the rules, to consider items under new business?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second Alderman Franco, Madam Clerk, call the, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
All right, Madam Clerk, you read the title of the first item under new business.
Twenty-three dash one zero four seven, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances to define and prohibit unscheduled bus stops and make other conforming changes.
Is there a motion to?
Remove.
Accept this ordinance? Motion made by Alderman Garza, second Alderman Smith. Before we call the roll on that, let's have some presentations, and I'll begin by just making a statement to set the record straight and give the indication of why we are here today. You know, before we open the floor to public comment, you know, I, before we open the floor for the aldermen to speak, I want to explain what Aurora City Council's role should be in this particular meeting. First, I want to thank everyone in attendance here at City, at City Hall, those who are watching online via YouTube, Aurora's website, the Aurora Community Television on Comcast and AT and TU-verse, and all those who will watch on the various media outlets who are present here today. We will host a media briefing immediately following the city council meeting for the media outlets that are present. You know, today, we're meeting to discuss what has been an increasingly concerning national issue, the impact of transporting of immigrants from the state of Texas to various cities throughout the United States. Let me begin by saying that this is an issue of humanity, humane treatment, or in the case of what we have seen recently, inhumane treatment. The proposed ordinance that you'll hear today is our way of mitigating and lessening the inhumane treatment of human beings, and it is designed to ensure that the city of Aurora knows when buses carrying persons, migrants migrating into the United States are arriving in Aurora, and what arrangements have been made for their care by their transporters prior to arrival. This ordinance was brought about based on what we witnessed earlier this week here in Aurora, when buses arriving directly from Texas dropped off passengers in downtown Aurora. These were not buses arriving from Chicago, but directly from Texas, as you will hear shortly from our staff members who were there on the scene of the bus drop. This ordinance is specifically intended to ensure the safety and welfare of those arriving by bus here in Aurora in the future, and provides a procedure to assist in directing migrants to their final destination. The ordinance is not for the purpose of penalizing migrants, rather, it regulates the way that these chartered buses operate within the city by requiring them to provide the community services department with basic information about their passengers and their human care. We simply cannot have a situation as exists where buses drop off at the side of the road, which include families and children, with only what they can carry on their purses, and with no protection against the winter weather, and no further direction on where to go and what to do. To allow this situation to continue is unacceptable and contrary to the city's values of treating all people, regardless of their origin, with dignity, respect, and care. To do nothing would be irresponsible, and most certainly guarantee that Aurora will become the destination of choice for these bus companies who are in search of a path of least resistance to Chicago. This time, I'm going to ask our staff to go over some, some details, I believe Deputy Mayor Memo Trujillo will provide some background. Deputy Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, my name is Guillermo Memo Trujillo. I am here to speak on my personal observations regarding December nineteenth involving the bus stops, or the bus drop-offs at Aurora Transportation Center. These are personal observations from my, my view and my involvement. On December nineteenth, at approximately one a, one P.M., the mayor's office got notified by ATC, our Transportation Center, that there was two buses that had arrived a couple hours apart. According to our staff, the passengers, the migrants, were taken off the bus and provided with a train ticket to Chicago, and directed to, straight to go onto the platforms and to get on the, on the bus, I'm sorry, on the train. And then the guards at that point, basically, once they were on the train, they returned to the bus and they left the property.
Just to be clear, the, the train ticket was provided by the Texas guards that were on the bus with the migrants?
That's correct, on both of the buses. At this time, they went back, they left. At that time, we found out that there was a previous bus the night before that followed the same procedure, they were given a train ticket by the guards on the buses, get on the train and go to Chicago, they left not even notifying us. The same day on the nineteenth, at about three thirty P.M., we were again notified by ATC staff that another bus had just arrived at the ATC with forty-eight migrants, passengers, at this time, but there was no tickets provided to them to get on the, on the train. They were going to be told to get off the bus because this was the end of their trip. It's at twenty-nine degrees at that time. We asked the bus driver to keep them in the bus while we worked on trying to make arrangements. We contacted EMA at Aurora and asked for their assistance to help us out. Aurora EMA notified Chicago EMA, and they had conversations, and they basically said, "We will take them as soon as you can get them here, get them here on the next available train." We, at that time, were running against the clock, the call, the call came in at three thirty, I arrived at three fifty, three fifty-five at the ATC. At that time, the bus was still loaded, and we were trying to make arrangements to get them to Chicago. I went and bought forty-eight tickets, one-way tickets to Chicago, following the direction of Chicago EMA that they would process those passengers if they got to Union Station. We took city funds, paid for forty-eight of them, and went out there. I loaded all the passengers from the bus to the train, and I saw them running, very lightly clothed, pajama pants for the babies, kids, I saw six to seven of them, running, shaking, running because that's what they were told to do. The parents were also running to the train because that's what they were told to do, if you don't get on the train, you get left behind. The clock was running against us. I saw the babies.
Told by, told by the Texas guards that were on the train.
Correct. So I went out there, talked to the conductor, I said, "I want all these people on the train, I have their tickets, please allow them in." They went in there, shaking, cold, I don't know if they were hungry, they don't speak the language, there was a guard with them, Spanish-speaking guard, basically tell them to get on the bus, on the train. At the end, there was two passengers. At the end, there was two passengers that said, "Can we stay? I have family coming to pick me up here." They were going to pick me up in Chicago, but they are coming here since we've been here waiting. I said, "That's your choice. You can wait." We had two extra tickets. The guard said, "I'm not staying with them. I brought them here. This is the end of my job. I'm leaving. So if they want to stay, that's on their own." He turned around and ran back to the bus. They got on the bus, him along with another guard and the bus driver, and they fled. We got them on the train, and by Chicago EMA's request, we got them on the four oh seven time clock or train to get them processed in Chicago where there was their destination. That's where they were going to be processed. That's where they were going to be registered.
So just to be clear, when they came to Aurora, they came the purpose of using our train facilities, their final destination that they wanted to go to was Chicago?
That was what they were told. That's what they were somewhat promised and told that that's where their family members or that's where they were going to receive these services.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
No. Let me keep going because later on that day, well, first of all, in the way that I saw the people running from the bus carrying just a paper bag, plastic bag with their belongings, the parents, you can see the confusion. I've been a police officer thirty years here in the city of Aurora. I've never seen people being treated this way as hurry it up or you get left behind. In a place where they don't speak the language, they don't have the money, they don't know the, they don't know the area, very little to wear, and they had, some of them had flip-flops or croc-type shoes as they were running into the train. So as a police officer, in twenty-nine degrees, I feel bad for them, but the only thing I can do is get them to the point where they were receiving the services that they were promised, told to go to, the destination of their trip. At about seven o'clock that evening, we got another phone call from ATC. Another bus had just arrived, except this time, it wasn't the bus that was parked in front of the transportation center. One of our ATC staffs overheard someone inquiring about the purchase of fifty-seven tickets to Chicago. The staff in the ATC called us and says, "I think we have more coming." He went out to the parking lot, looked for the bus. The bus was not there. They were hiding at the post office. So when he was trying to figure out the amount, he didn't have the money. They didn't have tickets. He started making phone calls on his cellphone.
Who was he?
The guard at the ATC, making phone calls to try to get funding for the tickets. It took him about thirty minutes before someone must have transferred money to him where he was able to get the tickets. We were able to get the last bus at eight oh seven, and then he called the bus over to the transportation center, unloaded them, put them on a train, and got himself back along with his partner on the bus, and they left. That was at eight oh seven. That's the last bus that we dealt with that evening. And again, it's not stopping them from being here, it's helping them get to the location. It's the way they're going about it, and the way they're doing it is by avoiding going to Chicago and avoiding fines, impoundments, and so on. What we're trying to say is that the companies are getting paid to provide transportation, and they're stopping short from the finish line and leaving it, leaving people there to fear for themselves if they don't have the money or figure out that eventually somehow they'll get you there, whether it's Aurora or any other city. These are people. They need to be taken care of, and we need to get them to where they need the service. That's my personal opinion. That's my personal experience and observations at that day and my personal involvement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Let's call our EMA, Emergency Management Coordinator, Natalie Weisa. Weisa?
Ma'am, can you give the procedure and what you experienced in dealing with these bus companies over the last couple of days and in communicating with the city of Chicago? Absolutely. Good afternoon, members of the council. Again, I'm Natalie Weisa, Emergency Management Coordinator for the city of Aurora. Just as our deputy mayor has demonstrated during his time, this was a one-day occurrence in our city, and it ended up being a whole city effort to ensure the safety and security of those individuals that arrived on the buses, and we wanted to ensure their expeditious movement to the area in which resources and services have been established for well over a year. They were established in the beginning, a fall in twenty-twenty-two, and that is the city of Chicago. So for over a year and a half, us in Aurora Emergency Management, myself and staff, have been collaborating and working with our regional partners in Cook County, the city of Chicago, private entities, and the collar counties and other municipalities planning for something like this to occur. We wanted to ensure the safe passages of any individuals to the designated landing zone. That is a term that the city of Chicago is using, and so they are provided the care and services that they are entitled to under the due process in which they have entered this country down in Texas. Until recent weeks, all buses were delivered to the landing zone directly from the state of Texas, supported by the state of Texas, and our efforts up until now have been purely for situational awareness and preparedness. However, the complicating matters is Texas is now choosing to charter buses of individuals, and the passenger count is typically forty to eighty per bus to the collar counties and local municipalities that have train stations around Cook and, or excuse me, outside of Cook and the city of Chicago, thanks to the ordinance that was passed in Chicago on December thirteenth, which allowed for the seizure and impounding of any vehicles that are violating the inner-city bus rules. The five buses that showed up in Aurora this week were five of around twenty-five that have arrived in the region since the ordinance adoption in Chicago, and the buses are not stopping. The little bit of intelligence and information that we do receive coming out of Texas, thanks to individuals that are positioned down there from Illinois, is that, excuse me, there are four to twelve buses that are being shipped out of El Paso and Brownsville and other communities down in Texas, and all we know with the intelligence is the point of origin of where the bus is leaving, the time that they are leaving, and an approximate number of passengers on that bus to make the twenty-two-hour trip from Texas to Illinois. We do not have a destination when they arrive in Illinois. The intelligence that we have is the bus drivers and security guards are provided addresses after they cross the border of Illinois and told where to take the individuals, whether it's to a train station, a parking lot, or the side of a highway to get them into Chicago. For example, just yesterday, there were migrants found walking down the side of the highway in Kankakee County because the bus driver just decided that he had had enough. He'd been driving for over thirty hours trying to locate an area here in our Chicagoland region, and he decided to kick them out. This became a Kankakee County and Will County issue. They were able to resolve it thanks to the plans and procedures we have in place, and they were able to safely move those individuals to the landing zone in the city of Chicago. Buses that are chartered by the state of Texas are sent with little to no notice, as I just explained. We have no itinerary of their arrival, no understanding of the passenger makeup besides a potential headcount of who's on there, and the individuals, we don't know if the individuals have the means to make it the rest of the way to Chicago or not if they're dropped off on the side of the highway or at a train station. We don't know their accommodations coming in, and we don't know what they were provided in the state of Texas. The buses are chartered with the two drivers and two security guards, and from what we've figured out here in Aurora and with our regional partners, the buses arrived, they may or may not have funding. Train tickets for those that have funding are purchased immediately and within the blink of an eye. The individual passengers are told to get off the bus and board the train that the ticket is associated with. There is nothing in between. The first buses that arrived on Tuesday, it was maybe twenty-five minutes between the arrival, train boarding, and train departure for them to go into Chicago. The other buses that are arriving with no funding, we've been told by the bus drivers or the security guards that the state of Texas is funding this operation, and they're waiting on the state of Texas to either wire transfer or provide credit card information for the tickets to be purchased. Meanwhile, some of these buses are being pushed out, passengers are being pushed out onto the side of the highway in our winter, and they're leaving it up to the local jurisdiction to take care of. As our deputy mayor pointed out, we had a bus hiding at the post office, but that's starting to become more frequent in the region. They're finding alternate ways to hide from security cameras, to drop people off in parking lots, to get them blocks away from train stations, and to leave these individuals to fend for themselves. So regardless of the way of how they're entering our region and arrive in Chicago, we have an entire backend of coordination and collaboration with governmental and private partners from all over the region to ensure the safe passage of these individuals. The coordination has only been made possible by the year and a half of planning, discussion, and collaboration with our regional partners. As soon as the call was received about the buses in Aurora on Tuesday, we as a city were able to act quickly, efficiently, and effectively for the sake of those individuals on the buses, and we were able to expedite them to Chicago to receive the services that they are entitled to. But if we continue to let the fly-by-the-night surprises occur, our efforts will be hampered. What is happening now does not allow for us as a city to appropriately provide for safe passage to the landing zone through the way that these processes have been built as the buses depart out of Texas. Because we in the city feel strongly about the safety and security of the individuals on the buses, we want to ensure the continued safe passage to the individuals, to their entitled services that are located in the city of Chicago, in which since fall of twenty-twenty-two, emergency management has been directed by the city of Chicago, Cook County, the state of Illinois Emergency Management Agency, and Illinois Department of Human Services to ensure that those people get there because the processes are in place. Today, we've come together to ensure that we continue the safe passage with the proposed ordinance to better care for this situation overall.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Weisa. Now we'll call on our Assistant Corporation Counsel, Nidia Molina, to go over the ordinance itself, and then we'll take questions and comments from the aldermen.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. Nidia Molina, Assistant Corporation Counsel. As you heard, in response to what has become a dire humane situation here in the city of Aurora, we have proposed the following ordinance that we believe were, will hold the individuals who are charting, chartering the bus services and dropping off individuals in undisclosed locations responsible and accountable, and it will also allow the city to enforce its ordinance power to hold those individuals accountable or organizations. So first, starting off, just a few definitions in order to put some context into the ordinance. We have used definitions that have been, are located in other parts of the ordinance, such as bus. The one that we have, that will be more discussed and further is the unscheduled bus stop, and that's exactly what you've heard from Deputy Mayor Trujillo and Ms. Weisa. This is the unloading or disembarking of passengers in locations undisclosed, and the ordinance requires certain steps to be taken in order to do, to allow that. The ordinance that we are proposing is, will apply to commercial motor vehicles. It will only apply to those engaged in privately chartered services, such as the ones that we have seen in the last few days. It will include those services that include disembarking of ten or more passengers who will not reboard. It will also include those services that are not providing a round-trip transportation. And just to clear up any confusion, it does not apply to any courtesy shuttles, shuttles with, we have seen tourism in the outlet or Paramount or Casino, those would not qualify under, or apply under this section of the ordinance. The conduct that, again, we're trying to prohibit and allow the city to be able to enforce is the unscheduled bus stops that we have seen in disembarking passengers with no information whatsoever. Operating a bus without a franchise, without a city franchise is already part of our ordinance. It has just been moved to a different location in this ordinance. So the application that is being requested from those services or bus organizations that are being chartered is information to be provided to the city through the chief community services officer, and we believe that information is readily available. That application would have to be given to the city five days prior to the date that the passengers intend to arrive, and it would include a series of information, including who the chartered bus is, the name and address of the drivers, the name and information of the passengers. We also ask for the date and time of the intended arrival. We're asking that to know who will be present, and we're asking for a detailed plan of how those individuals will be cared for and fed while in the city of Aurora. We believe that information is, it's critical to know in order to understand whether or not they will be safely transported to their final destination in Chicago or wherever it may be. The application, once completed, which will be available online and in person, will be reviewed by the community service officer for approval, and once approved, they will receive a phone number from the community service department so that there can be some coordination between that bus and the city of Aurora. Denial of those applications will be provided in writing. Reasons for some of the denials, if lack of information or complete information, or if they're not providing a detailed plan so we understand exactly how the individuals on those buses will be cared for while in the city of Aurora and including their trip. The penalties associated with violating any portions of the ordinance would be failure to apply, failure to fill out the application would be, again, this would be strictly to the owner, operator, and driver of the bus, and I just want to make that very clear. This is related to the individuals who are driving, the individuals who are the owners, the individuals who are chartering these services. We would be allowed to fine them up to a thousand dollars per passenger that they transport without this information and without informing the city with the information that is being requested, plus additional costs if associated with those. Violation of associated with a scheduled, unscheduled bus would also here, trigger a seven hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee, and additionally, we are asking that portions of the ordinance be, give the Aurora Police Department the ability to tow and impound those vehicles if the situation arises, for the need for such measures to be taken. And so just in closing, again, I want to just clarify that this is an ordinance that will allow the city a tool to be able to safely ensure, or ensure that the individuals who are coming to the city are being cared for and are being, that the information that we are receiving is information that makes sense, information that we can verify, and just, it's not restricting access, it's holding the individuals accountable who are being paid for to drive individuals into the state of Illinois. We expect that they have this information. It's not information that should be unknown, but it's the only information that we can have to safely assure that individuals who are arriving can be here safely, and again, we can provide resources for them to reach their final destination. It's merely a tool for the city to enforce and to dissuade those individuals who are dropping off human beings on the side of the road in various other locations.
Thank you. Now, at this time, I will entertain comments or questions from the aldermen and of all three speakers, if you are available, call Ms. Weisa and have her available in case there are any questions for her as well. Questions from the aldermen or comments? Alderman Seville?
I have a question or two. If the, well, first off, it's unfortunate that migrants and asylum seekers are being used as political pawns by the governor of Texas or whoever is doing this. But my question is in terms of how this is going to be regulated and enforced. If, well, for example, if the, we have in our system where we have traveling sports teams for both school districts and both private, do they, do they need to be exempted in this ordinance?
They would be exempt under the definition.
We don't have to specifically state that in there?
No. The definition allows for, it already, those type of courtesy shuttle buses or that type of procedure is already exempt under the definitions and the applicability section of the ordinance that is being proposed.
And if the bus companies are, for example, if they would charge the migrants a certain fee to get on the bus, how does that apply to our, this proposed ordinance? If they charge a fee of transportation and they pay it, even if it's a nominal like a dollar or whatever, and they're provided with a receipt, does that affect this ordinance at all?
I don't see that it does affect it. I think the three qualifiers would still trigger that.
Okay.
But from what we've seen, there has been no payment asked for by the migrants. This is a Texas initiative where they're paying to have these migrants, these individuals, human beings, put on this bus and transported. As a matter of fact, when they get to a destination like Aurora or any other place where there's a metro station, where they're stopping short of going directly to Chicago, they're even paying for, on their own, the security guards who are agents of the Texas, paying for their own, paying for them to have train passes to get into Chicago. Is that correct?
Correct, Your Honor. And Ms. Weisa can probably speak more of that, to that. What my understanding is that the security guards who are on the buses are the ones that are holding the money and the finances, so that passengers don't have tickets, the passengers don't have the finances. The security guards are the ones who are in charge to purchase their transportation.
Ms. Weisa, you want to step forward, just kind of elaborate on that?
Yeah. So pertaining to the funding of any train tickets or bus chartering here to Illinois and then train tickets to their destinations, from what we have heard from a couple of the security guards that were on our buses earlier this week, as well as our partners in the region, they are showing up and they're saying that the state attacked. our partners in the region, they are showing up and they're saying that the state of Texas is paying for the bus charter. So they get up here to Illinois, and when they arrive, they're supposed to notify someone in the state of Texas, and the state of Texas will somehow provide some sort of financial transaction to them, whether it's credit card, PayPal, we're not sure, we don't have that answer. The passengers who are coming up here are not allowed to handle any funding at all. They are being, the funding is being 100% held by the security guards that are coming up with them from Texas.
Thank you, ma'am. Follow-up question, Alderman Seville?
Yeah, I have another question. How, really, how is this going to be enforced? For example, if there's no schedule, the community in no way, shape, or form knows when these buses are arriving, are we stationing police officers at these centers of potential drop-off? And what happens if they don't drop them off? What happens if they do and can't keep what they drop them off the side of the road? How is this going to be enforced if it's a pass?
So, let's assume that they fill out an application and it is approved, and they are, they're saying that the drop-off will be at the Aurora Transportation Center. Someone from community services will be there to ensure that they arrive, ensure that they, no one needs, there's no issues with their final destination. That's how it would theoretically work. We would know when they're coming, who's arriving, and what, if anything, is going to be needed from the, from the city's perspective. If there is any need that, for anything further, I know EMA will be also in communication with community services in order, just to ensure that there's open communication between EMA and Aurora and Chicago. If they don't apply, assuming the ordinance passes and there's no application and we just find them, I'm going to use, again, the ATC for a lack of a better location, then we would, the Aurora Police Department may be called because there is a security issue or the concerns, but it's not a law enforcement issue in our eyes. It's, again, a community service humanitarian issue, so we're going to get information with who the driver is, who the owner of the company, who the owner of the buses, and we will issue, like we would normally do through our administrative hearing process, summons and complaints to issue violations to those individuals.
But we're, well, number one, the ordinance is based on, on the assumption that people are going to follow the ordinance. And two, is my concern is people that don't, and then these migrants and asylum seekers are afraid, they're probably hungry, and like you mentioned, they're unclothed, the testimony that was given. In this kind of weather, they need some type of protection. What can we do to help prevent this from occurring? That's why I say, you know, will, will we have some type of staff at these transportation centers during this crisis of this winter that we're experiencing now, and it's only going to get colder?
We will not have Aurora Police Department officers stationed at the ATC between now and, we, the problem is, we just don't know when they're coming, how long they're going to be here. We are, we have fantastic communication with the staff at ATC, between ATC, the mayor's office, and EMA, and the variety of other departments to deal with issues as they arise. I know, one, assuming that they're here, we will continue to do what we did on Tuesday, open communication with EMA, community services, law enforcement if needed, but the point is to get them to their final destination, which is the processing, the landing zone. The processing center where they can receive the services, go through the due process, require their due process issues, and get them to where they need to get to.
The other communities in the area that have passed a similar ordinance, how effective has it been?
I'm sorry?
The other communities in the, in the region that have passed a similar type of ordinance, how effective has it been since they adopted those ordinances?
The only thing I can say about the other few ordinances that we have seen, ours are, we have taken a community service approach to ours. A couple of the other ordinances are managed, and the central point becomes a law enforcement, becomes a police department. We want to make sure that we take what we believe is a community service issue, a humane issue, dealing with individuals and providing the resources that they need. I can't say how successful it has been in terms of has it, because we just don't know the location, how many buses were supposed to be there, and how many of them didn't actually go there.
We haven't been in communication with any municipality in the area.
Alderman, at this point, all of these ordinances are, have been enacted within the last two weeks, so it's very hard to get good data points.
Okay, thank you. No other questions at this time?
All right, so, Ms. Wise, if you could step up for a second, and also Deputy Mayor Trujillo, the question I think that Alderman Seville was getting at is, how are we aware that these buses may be coming into town? Now, I know that we've had an immediate response when we found out about it, how are you hearing about the fact that the buses may be coming to Aurora?
So, there is an intelligence string with myself and the regional partners, Cook County and/or Chicago, I do not know which one, has set up the ability to kind of gauge numbers that are coming out of Texas. And so what we do is, they will just kind of notify us that are in the region here, you know, we have X amount of buses coming, this is the time that the bus left, and the point of origin in which they departed. We've seen El Paso, we've seen Brownsville, that's been kind of the two main areas. Time of departure is very critical, so if you think about it, from El Paso to our area here in Illinois is roughly 22 hours if you round, and then you need to factor in pit stops for fuel because the bus can't go that far without refueling, right? So we put in a buffer of about three hours, and we can gauge when we really need to start looking and identifying in our region where these buses may be popping up at. In the last few days, this intelligence has been helpful and very critical for us to have eyes out there, and we have been successful in spotting most of the buses and ensuring the safe passage through to Chicago for these individuals, regardless of if it's been here in Aurora, or if it has been elsewhere in the region. So it's not a lot of information to go off of, but it is enough that we're able to not get a surprise, per se. We know buses are coming at some point during the 24-hour period from Texas.
And Deputy Mayor Trujillo, can you talk a little bit about the response time and the few buses that you've had, the five, or four buses that you've had contact?
The response to the first, the first one that came overnight, we weren't even aware of it. They came in, and like I said, in 25 minutes, they came, dropped off, and left. The other ones, we were there within half an hour, just making sure, like Ms. Wise said, our staff is on the lookout on the parking lots the whole time. They, we have staff there from probably 6:00 in the morning until 20, 2:30, 10:30 at night, keeping an eye on the property itself. So if they arrive during that time, and the last train leaves around 11:04, according to this metro schedule, we can keep an eye on that. The rest of it will have to be, you know, count on police department to kind of keep an eye on the area, as well as other employees if we are able to. How powerful or how positive they've been in regarding this city ordinances? I think it's powerful enough that if you pass something like this, if it was to pass, that Chicago, they're already avoiding Chicago for those same reasons. They don't want to get stopped, they don't want to get their buses impounded because of what they're doing. So that's why they're going everywhere else. So I can't tell you how good it is to pass something, how, you know, enforcement will be, but I think that they are getting the message. Does that answer your question?
And Ms. Molina, will you step up one more time, just talk about the way this ordinance is drafted, you know, if a bus decides to go through our process and still able to come to Aurora, it gives a time period to where if their final destination is Chicago, they'll still be able to get there in time to be processed and not be turned away.
Correct. It allows us to connect the passengers from the bus with any resources that we may have through community service and make sure that they get on the correct bus. As Deputy Trujillo mentioned, and Ms. Wise mentioned, we have, individuals don't speak the language, we have two security guards onboard, two drivers onboard, and it's, it could be incredibly frightening from reviewing some of the incidents, and so this will allow us to ensure that, one, I guess, so another issue is that the people who left from the city of Texas are the one, are the same number and same amount of people who are arriving here. We don't want to be in a situation where 50 people were told, we were told 50 people were coming, and then we're missing 30. Then it would be, it would create another response, and with this system, we would have an ability to reach out to the police department, reach out to Texas, reach out to NICMIC if a child is involved and we need to report someone missing. And so it gives us an opportunity to make sure that the people who are arriving are safe, accounted for, and are going to safely make it to their next point in, point in the process.
Thank you. Any other question? Alderman Masiaakos, I believe you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I could just ask Natalie Wise real quick a question, and it's actually, I'd like to ask you to reaffirm that our city has a process for addressing shelter, clothing, nourishment, and care for any migrant that chooses to, chooses to pick Aurora as a destination point?
So, as a reminder, Alderman, we here in the city of Aurora, we're accredited through the state Illinois as an emergency management agency, we have rules we have to follow, whether it's migrants, a tornado, a flood, an earthquake, or a bomb that goes off somewhere. Our sheltering plan stands the same throughout, depend, regardless of what event that is. So if there was ever any need that we needed to temporarily keep them overnight because a train wasn't running, or we ended up with a snowstorm and we had to wait it out for a little bit until we can safely get them to Chicago, we would temporarily do that, and, and we have those processes in place to temporarily take care of them for the short time span until we can get them coordinated with the city of Chicago.
No, but I mean, if they, if, I'm not talking about Chicago, I'm saying, what happens if they choose Aurora to be a destination point?
So if they choose Aurora to be a destination point, they're free to be here on their own, we can't force them to go on a train, we can't force them to get back on a bus. They are free, which I believe Deputy Mayor did mention, we did have some that went off with family on their own permission when the train came, and that's totally fine. If we were to shelter them here in Aurora, just like the city of Chicago is doing, we would be looking at $200 to $300 per person, per day, for years, to take care of them. We could only sustain it for a short amount of time, but the, the key thing here is to get them to the services that the money is already established for, that is already put up in place in the city of Chicago, and that the Illinois Department of Human Services is directing us to get them to. So any sheltering we would do would be very temporary.
But we would be working with our community partners?
Oh, absolutely. Like, we would, I'm sorry, yes, no. We would work with community partners, they would not be left out. Our faith-based, our nonprofit, our philanthropic, they're all critical in times of disasters and emergencies. It would not just be an us effort. If it came to that point, we would reach out and ask for assistance.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Warman? Obviously, you know, they could drop off anytime, anyplace, anywhere. Is there any repercussions, let's say, if somebody dropped off at a Jewel parking lot at 3:00 a.m. and everybody there, is there any way to find that bus and pound that bus after the fact, you know?
I'm going to hand it over to Nidia.
You know, to enforce this proposed legislation?
We would have a mechanism, and that's what the ordinance is proposing. It gives us the authority to do so. We would go into how we normally would follow up on any ordinance violation, we would probably have to look at, what information can we gather from witnesses who were there to get information about the owner, the bus operator, the driver? We probably review security cameras that we may have around the area to try to get that information. So we'd follow what we normally would follow with any violation of an ordinance or a crime.
So there is a mechanism, again, for community members, if they see something awful happening like this, there's a mechanism that we can start the process immediately, whether it's calling the police, or any kind of, you know, immediate penalty or an investigation down the road. Let's say seven days later, you know, a week later we find out, or two weeks later we found out it was ABC Bus Company, we can follow the legal process to.
Absolutely, and we would encourage that, absolutely.
And then I just want to confirm and reiterate what Alderman Masiaakos said, so, again, if somebody dropped off at a Jewel at 3:00 a.m., we have a process in place to feed, clothe, provide shelter. That's something that we'd normally do, like you said, whether it's a bomb or, or anything like that at all, so we do have stuff like that in process. So nobody goes unfed, unclothed, or unhoused, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? I got Alderman Smith, and then we'll come back to Alderman.
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was very difficult to sit through this today, and I'm so happy to, that so many of you came out with your heartfelt comments and care about the humanity of these people. We are human, too. We are mothers, we are fathers, we have children, we care about these people. Where I got frustrated today, it was so wonderful to have so many people here, is those who chose this moment to, to throw stones at us without even knowing the entire story, the process, without taking the time to learn what happened. We didn't turn anyone away, and I hope that as you all leave this room today, you have that clear. Aurora did not turn anyone away. But some of you chose to use this moment to advance your own self, your own opportunity to say terrible things to us that we denied them essential human needs. We did not. We took care of these people, we did what we needed to do. Aurora did not turn anyone away. That is not who we are, and we are one Aurora. Thank you, Mayor.
To that point, before we go to Alderman Tolliver, as a matter of fact, Deputy Mayor, will you step up one more time? And there was a request made by the police officers on the scene for at least a couple of those buses that actually asked the migrants on the buses if they needed any help or support from Aurora, and they declined and actually said they were just interested in going to Chicago. Can you kind of go into detail about that?
That's correct. The officers that responded while I was making the purchase tickets, I actually asked them if they needed any assistance, any food, anything else like that. And like I said, most of them were just interested in getting to Chicago to get processed, long ride, tired, you know, they're, they're trying to get on with their lives after the 25-hour trip. Again, the offer was made, it was declined. We did what we could to help out with the instructions we were given at the time that it was given.
Thank you. Alderman Tolliver?
Yeah, so I just want to say, not to repeat a lot of the stuff that was said, Alderman Masiaakos and Alderman Warman did ask some of the questions that I have, so thank you for that. But just to kind of piggyback on some of the sentiment that Alderman Smith was just saying right now, point of clarification, this is not a proposed ordinance to turn people away. It's not a proposed ordinance to send people back to Texas or anything like that. This is a proposed ordinance so that the busing companies that are coming from Texas have to give us five days' notice of what's going on. Without that notice, like was stated today, I mean, what if they send 50 people on a bus, we get 20, so then what happens to that? The city of Aurora is going to be blamed for that, we're going to try to figure out what happened to these people. We need to know what's happening. It's also, it would be irresponsible for us not to use all the resources or all the tools that we may be able to use, like this proposed ordinance, to make sure that the people that are coming here are not dropped off at a Jewel, Losco, are not dropped off on the middle of 88, all those things like that. So I just want that to be a point of clarification. Nobody was turned away. We use city funds to make sure that the people that could not get to the city got to the city itself. And I just felt like I needed to clarify that for everybody listening, for everybody in the room, because a lot of the things that were said today before we were able to hear from the deputy mayor just simply weren't true. And I think it's important to know all the facts, to listen to everything, and then to come up with solutions rather than to just keep kind of talking about what's perceived to be wrong, or whatever the case may be, without knowing all the facts. Thank you.
Warman, then Alderman Lesch.
You know, and I sit here and I listen, and this is just more of a comment than anything, this is nothing new to Aurora. I've heard stories, and I'm sure the police officers in this room could say, oh, people from other cities buy them a one-way ticket, send them to Aurora, they, they don't want their problem in another city. So we've done this many, many times, and taken people in that need help, whether it's going to Hesit House, whether it's going to, you know, a church or something like that, too. So we're not the city that turns people away, because every day there's people, this just so happens to be such a politicized event, that's, obviously, we've got seven cameras here, it looks like, covering this. This is something that happens every single day, and we're just, I'm personally appalled, does somebody think I would pass something that would turn people away? It's just, this is a process in place to ensure the safety and the, the final destination for everybody. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Lesch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank city staff for responding in a timely manner. And another fact is, the city was scheduled to have a half-day today, so them are, they are now here past that time, and that is the reason, I believe, for the 12 o'clock meeting time, for those who were unclear about that. So thanks for staying late to have this meeting. And then finally, thanks to everybody who spoke up, and wish everybody a happy holiday season. I do have a question about the ordinance. I believe you mentioned the franchisee, this is page nine, section two, about obtaining grant authority. Do we know how many bussing, you know, one of the, the impacts here is, what will this, what will this ordinance have on existing transportation companies? It's pretty airtight with respect to people coming in, visiting, but how many franchisees or busing companies do we have that have granted authority? And did we run this ordinance by them, existing bus companies in Aurora?
Alderman, if I could answer that, the, the language regarding the franchisees is existing language. It hasn't changed from, I believe, the late 1960s. I do not believe that the city still franchises buses in the way that it used to be. I believe that one point in the 60s, there were buses that operated intra-city within, in Aurora, that's no longer the case. We left that on the books, just in case there was anything remaining, but that language regarding franchises doesn't change, and it is, is not impacted as a result of what we're doing today.
Do all the busing companies that are currently Do all the bussing companies that are currently, like Tesla, do they have that grant authority?
I do not know. I do not believe that there are currently any franchised buses operating in the city these days, just because of the, the way bus transportation has changed, where we've issued franchises.
Well, so Tesla does run your regular schedules in and out of La Grafa.
Along the lines of a.
To Durango and back, with inconsistent passengers.
That should not be affected, because those are public, that would be a publicly posted bus, where the individuals who wish to purchase transportation one way to Aurora, they're purchasing on their own, anybody could purchase those, those types of tickets, as opposed to, in this particular case, where the tickets are purchased for them and they're not available for sale to the general public.
And I guess along those lines, and this might be a question for you as well, this ordinance seems to hold the bus company accountable, or attempt to, but none of this holds Governor Abbott accountable? And have we looked at or interviewed some of these people? Because it was mentioned that the security guards, there are security guards that are controlling these people's finances. Have we looked at building a case for kidnapping or human trafficking cases, either with the Attorney General or state's attorney?
The information that we've received thus far does not point in that direction yet, and until there is a ability or any sort of a situation where a crime has been committed to detain persons who are operating those buses to conduct that level of interrogation, we wouldn't be at that point yet.
Okay. I guess my other big concern, I'm just going to highlight, is something Alderman Seville broke up, that I see this as if we pass this ordinance, they're going to try, and it was made clear, that Texas is adapting. They're now not sending people to Chicago, they're sending people to the airport. They're adapting to the ordinances that have been put in place. My concern is that if we pass this ordinance, it's going to cause those bus companies to hide, drop their people off more regularly, and I understand we can chase them down, but that puts the people more at risk if they're dumped along the side of the road. It does sound like you did a good job working with IMA to respond to those, and I'm sure we can, but as winter grows closer, you know, that, that I think is a very legitimate concern if we pass this ordinance, that that'll be a continuing problem. And then I guess my, the final thing, these are just suggestions for alternative routes other than just, this is, we do have the three overpaid lobbyists, one I think is dedicated to federal issues, and we have two U.S. congresspeople, and the issue in Venezuela is one of our own making. The United States of America has made this problem. I think it was the Trump administration that put the oil embargo on Venezuela and sanctions, and we should use our federal resources to address those changes to our foreign policy. I know nobody here on the Aurora City Council is writing foreign policy, but we do have federal resources that we can employ. I will be contacting our two congresspeople to weigh in on that. And as well, there's going to be increased climate migration, and I will be also calling for a carbon tax, because as the world gets hotter, the South is going to be paying for all of us who are driving fossil fuel vehicles, and I would like to see the city lobby in direction of a carbon tax, so the oil state of Texas will be paying for this. Thank you.
Alderman Bug?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Legal question.
Alderman Bug, we lost?
Line 18 of that clause. Can we go take a look at that?
Alderman Bug, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we didn't hear you, you were garbled. Can you repeat the question?
Certainly. On page six, line 18. If we go and take a look at that clause, I believe there's a typo, and it, it's not a full sentence. So I was trying to make sense of that clause.
Alderman Bug, that section, the operation of motor, you would need to read that in context, I believe, with the remainder of paragraph B. In that case, I think it would be clear as to why that is, appears to be a sentence fragment as opposed to a complete sentence. It is effectively stating that the operation of motor vehicle, okay? I think what you're seeing is there is an extra word "in" after "vehicle," is that?
I believe that was part of it.
So can we clarify and clean up that word? We'll clarify it.
That could be a Scrivener's error that we can correct at the time of codification.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Alderman Bug?
The first word "in" should be removed?
Correct, we see that, Alderman Bug.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments, Alderman Bug?
Just my general comment. Definitely, you know, of course, this is a regional and state issue. I want to thank the EMA and Ms. Wise on their fast action, and the work of everyone in the city and the mayor's office, in helping in that situation. Because we are a train hub, that is part of the reason that we were targeted. And we, we, you know, Alderman Seville asked about other cities, I've been contacted by some other municipal officials. We know the city of Rosemont had some issues also, because they are on a line there, an L-line that leads into the city. So we are a part of that. The other cities with train stations, train hubs, you know, they may take action also. We even have now, we're learning that the state of Texas has employed airplanes to land at airports with much the same issue. So this is not going away. This is definitely a step in the right direction to safeguard those migrants coming here so that they can have resources, that we know that the resources can be there for them if they stop here, and if they're going to carry on to Chicago, that those resources are there when they arrive there. Definitely, I appreciate Alderman Messiakos' comment, if someone decides to make Aurora their new home, or possibly they don't want to go on to Chicago, that we are able to help them assimilate with the resources that we have here. So that is my comment, and again, I thank EMA for their excellent work earlier this week.
Any other questions or comments from the Alderman? Alderman Franco?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody for coming and expressing your concerns. You know, we are a very benevolent and compassionate city. I think that's part of the frustration, because that's who we are, so when we're not living up to what our reputation is, I understand the angst in the room. You know, it's a shame the situation has happened. We know this is a political situation from the state of Texas. They're using these people as pawns. If they weren't, then they wouldn't be coming all the way to Illinois. They wouldn't be driving 22 miles to get out of the state of Texas. So there's a purpose for all this, and these poor people aren't paying for it. But I, but I think what's lacking here, and what I think this ordinance will provide, is structure. You know, we needed some structure on this process to allow the city to handle this in a humane and appropriate manner, and I think this ordinance goes to, towards that. You know, as we go on, we're going to have other problems later on with things, we'll be looking at tweaking and amending some stuff. But I think right now, having that structure in place so we can handle this in appropriate humane manner is probably the way to go for this particular thing. And I do want to thank everybody for coming out and voicing your opinion, because it is an important situation, and I think we're trying to do the best we can to make it as appropriate humane for those people as we can.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the Alderman? There being none, Madam Clerk? There being a motion and a second on the floor, would you please call a roll?
There are one more. I'd just like to say something here. I just listened to my colleagues here at Diaz, especially after the comments by Alderman Franco about tweaking, amending, thinking about the fact that we do have a process to take care of anybody who has this destination point in Aurora. We are helping people move on forward if their destination point's not in Aurora. It's a little bit of a challenge to sit here and look at something if it is this important, to understand if it's, requires tweaking, amending, to vote one way or the other. And I'm not an attorney to be able to tell you that I can quickly look at this resolution and tell you yes or no at this, at this juncture. So just want to say that I'm just not ready to go forward or backward on this one at this juncture. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One other quick comment along the lines of having the resources to deal with people who choose to make Aurora a destination city. I think that there are people who are here, I did speak with one food pantry who's seen Guatemalan, Colombian, Venezuelan people, that they are registering, which means that people are coming here. I would like to see that we do apply for any additional federal or state grants, so that we have the resources to more adequately deal with those. Thank you again for the extended comment.
All right, we're going to call a roll in a second, but to be clear, what this ordinance is about, and I can appreciate the comments from all the Alderman about how if someone were to stay here short-term in Aurora, how we would deal with this issue, is specifically about holding the bus companies, bus drivers, and these security guards from Texas accountable for the inhumane treatment of the migrants that they're transporting on, in, on their buses. That's what this is about. So let's all focus on what that is about. And I could also appreciate the comments about, you know, what might happen if, for some reason, well, according to Alderman Lesch, what he believes might happen if we don't pass this ordinance, well, what's going to happen, if we do pass this ordinance, what's going to happen if we don't? If we don't, people are going to continue to be dropped off and left in, in Aurora without any resources, without any care, inhumanly, and we won't have any say about it whatsoever. This specifically holds these bus companies, the drivers, and everybody participating along the way to get them, get them here in their transport accountable to the city of Aurora. So with that, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Present.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Alderman Bug, can you repeat that? It's a little garbled.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Lesch?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
Motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. There is no need for a closed session. Motion to adjourn, this is a motion to adjourn by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Lesch. All in favor?
Hi.
This meeting is adjourned, there will be a press conference followed.